Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the work session meeting of municipal council for June 24th, 2019. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
Here.
Councilmember Deal.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Councilmember Joshi.
Present.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Here.
Adequate notice, please.
Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975 has been provided by an annual notice sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Sentinel on December 1st, 2018, and posted main lobby missile complex on that same date.
We'll start from the list. Maria Orchid.
Hi, thank you. Maria Orchid, 83, Jefferson. First, I would like to thank the council for their participation. We had project graduation on Friday night. It was a great success. All the students had a great time and lots of memories. So I'd like to thank you. Thank you for your participation. Also, on Saturday was a joint effort between Edison Families Days and Earth Day. We had a great -- a lot of people that came out. We had different companies, volunteers, vendors, learned a lot of great information, and I'd like to thank you for your participation. Also, about two weeks ago, I went to the Sustainable Jersey Summit. I'd like to also thank you for allowing us, members of the Sustainable Jersey Edison Green team, to partake in that beautiful event. Learned many new things, such as besides roofings for schools, there are other programs available. Landscaping is one. Lighting is another. So this wonderful website, NJ2.com, which shows your water with people not knowing where do their water come from. Many valuable information, so I'd like to thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Anthony Diamarin.
Good evening, Council President. First, I want to give recognition to the hard work in DPW rank and file members, employees. They did a great job of cleaning up --
Thank you.
Oh, 15 Rodak Circle.
Thank you, sir.
Anthony Diamarin, 15 Rodak Circle. They did a great job of cleaning up the Veterans Memorial Park. It's a shame, though, that it took, you know, what it took to get it cleaned up, photos and going live and stuff, and I think adequate leadership would, you know, take care of that. But I want to give them a recognition that they deserve. The second and last thing I want to bring up is the library. Now, before you tell me to go to the library board and deal with the library board, I ask all members to attend a library board meeting. Because with all due respect, it is a three-ring circus. It really is. I actually feel sorry for Councilman Joshi for having to show up to these meetings constantly. But whether it is what is the structural issues inside the North Edison Library, the flooring itself, whether it is building a new state-of-the-art, soundproof office in the south end for a new position created for Chief of Staff, that's not what my concern is. My concern is the work environment for the employees there. They are in a prison-type work environment. I use those words. I know those are strong words, but that is the truth. And something needs to be done. These are hard-working employees, and they are constantly being bullied by many different tactics, whether it be security guard, whether it be cameras. They're in constant fear. It is a shame that this is what happens to township employees, and something needs to be done. I want to bring it to your attention. You are elected representatives, and you need to be made aware of this. And something needs to be done. It is a shame. These are good, hard-working folks. They're not -- they just want to do their job. And they're in constant fear, and it is such a shame that this is what it comes down to. But I hope something is done about this. It is that important to our library. Our library is supposed to be a sanctuary for our children, for all residents to use and enjoy. But what's really going on behind the scenes is really a shame. So I hope -- I just wanted to put that forward, and hopefully something is done about this. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Was any of this, Anthony, was any of this brought to the board's attention to talk to the administrative people in charge there?
Well, I'll tell you this. I haven't directly addressed the board yet regarding this. Whether it has in the past, I don't know. I could tell you this, the employees there are afraid to speak up. I could tell you that for a fact, so...
Well, how do you know this, though?
I could -- I'm not going to reveal my sources, but the point is, I could tell you firsthand that this is not just one person. This is across the board.
Well, this is a personnel issue, right, obviously? And this is not something you can talk about in a public forum like this. But if that's the case, then the board should take action and talk to the administration.
Oh, I agree. I 100% agree with that. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And I think also, Roman said, yeah, and I also, the BA currently sits on the board as well, so we could just take note of that. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Council President, there are two things here. Number one, the safety, yes, it's a personal issue, but Maureen, if you can look at the -- as you sit on the board, so if you can get the direct or indirect feedback from the employees, that would be helpful to address the concern here. The second one is the safety, the structural issue. If I recollect some of the initiatives, I believe the Township Engineering Department was helping a couple of years ago to look at some of the structural issues, whether it's a Clarabarton, north end, south end. Do we know where it stands?
No, the library board is looking into that. They got bids, but for whatever reason, they didn't move forward.
Okay, so this is solely on the library and township? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Northgrave. I was told last year that I could not be part of the conversation that occurs because I'm a liaison when there's a personnel issue in the back. Is that true? Am I not allowed to join the conversation that they have behind closed doors in closed session?
My recollection is that we -- I thought we had looked at this, and we had concluded you in fact could be, but let me -- I don't want to just give you a flip.
Okay.
Let me just take a look at it, and I'll advise.
Okay.
Just to be sure we're on, you know, on firm ground. So if somebody's saying you can't be in there, I want to give you -- I don't want to say you can be in there. I want to say you can be in there according to Jones v. Smith and, you know, NJSA 40A, whatever.
Okay.
Let me give you some backup.
All right, thanks.
Council President, just to add on Councilman Joshi's remark here, if I recollect again, it's three years ago when I was the library liaison, I was allowed to sit in the closed session.
You were?
Yes. So I'm not sure what got changed from that point onwards. Just to give the reference here.
Okay, I appreciate you letting me know that.
I think, is there a new attorney on the library board now?
There is a new.
So maybe the ruling is different.
Okay, we'll look into it. Thank you. We're off the list. Oral petitions and remarks. Mrs. Walke.
Lois Walke, Peak Road. I'd like to talk about item 11F under law. It's a resolution authorizing the sale of township property not needed for public use pursuant to NJSA, et cetera, et cetera. It just struck me a little odd because there were three bidders on this. One was for $2,600, one was for $101,000, the other one was for $300,000. And the original ordinance says it would be in the best interests of the town to sell it to the highest bidder. Now, the two highest bidders were found noncompliant as they failed to submit consent of surety in relation to the $2 million performance bond. Now, if there's a $2 million performance bond, how did we have someone getting this with $2,600 as opposed to $101,000 or $300,000? It just struck me as odd, and I appreciate some comments on it.
Yeah, Ms. Walke, the issue, and I think we're probably -- I'm going to give you as much as I can without -- it's going to probably be the subject of a closed session later this evening with the rest of the council, but what the sale of this property contemplated was that you would pay an amount of money and you would agree to clean up the property. There is about, we estimate, we had Bay Shore Recycling come in and give us an estimate of 1.5 million to remove the existing mulch. And then the responsible bidder, I mean, the successful bidder would also need to guarantee their performance for the full cleanup of the property so as to remove that liability from the township. The Department of Environmental Protection is very interested in this property being cleaned up, the pile removed, and the process moving on. And it has been in the past, the problem with these mulch piles is that in the warmer months, there has been spontaneous combustion issues. In other words, the piles literally just go on fire because of the heat that's inside the pile. That's about as much as I know about spontaneous combustion. But so the idea was that the requirement for the bid was that they submit the performance bond and the consent of surety as part of that, and if -- and that's the whole bid package. So it's how much you'd pay for it plus the performance bond. While the other two bidders submitted larger numbers, the performance bond was not there. And so that's why we're making the recommendation that the township go forward with awarding the sale to the company that, although they only bid $2,600, they have provided the performance bond and candidly, they have the experience, the demonstrated experience, because they cleaned up the -- they own the property next door, and they cleaned that up already. So that's the idea, the DEP is aware of this, and the DEP is to the extent that, you know, it matters, the DEP is supportive of this just getting cleaned up.
Okay, now that you mentioned it, you refreshed my memory, but I understand that perfectly. What I didn't understand, the coincidence of the two highest bidders failing to submit the consent of surety.
I can't speak to who the other bidders.
That's what struck me very odd.
I can't, I don't know who the other bidders were. What my office reviewed it, and what at least the general impression was, is that the other bidders were not aware of what, I don't think they attended, I think there was a pre-bid -- and I'm trying to remember, this goes back a while, but there was a pre-bid conference. I don't think the other bidders had attended the pre-bid conference, and so the additional concern was that they don't understand the scope of the issue. But I also understand that, you know, there's members of council want to discuss this further, you know, with a little bit more input from me on some issues that I just don't want to -- you know, I'm not at liberty to discuss in public.
Okay. Second, 11D settlement agreement with Mara McNamara. Could you give me some of the circumstances and the amount of settlement? How much is costing the people of Edison? Zero?
Yeah, the issue was Ms. McNamara had been a township employee. Her employment ended, let's put it that way, you know, since we're speaking in public, the employment ended. She filed suit to litigate the circumstances surrounding the end of her employment. She has, we were prepared to file a motion for summary judgment, which would cost a decent amount of money. She approached us and said if we would change the conditions of the ending of her employment from a termination to a resignation, she would withdraw the lawsuit. While we think our actions were entirely appropriate, there was absolutely no reason to spend an additional $5,000, $10,000, even though we were 99.999% sure we were going to win. The mayor has never liked those odds when I give them to him. He wants it to be 100%. I can't ever give him 100% on a lawsuit. So in this case, it was, she agreed to go away for no money, not agreed to go away, she agreed to resolve the matter for no money, and that's why we're recommending this resolution.
Okay, I'd like to see more settlements like that.
So would I.
The third thing, Finance 9D Olson Avenue. That's when they're getting their taxes. How'd they state that? They're now tax exempt for the third and fourth quarter, and they won't have to pay the $20,811 in taxes. Now, am I correct in thinking this 9 Olson Avenue entity, is that the one that Iron Wall spoke about for two years where there were zoning problems, and they cut a fence, and they were having cars parking on the public streets? There were so many problems, and now all of a sudden, miraculously, they're tax exempt? And I don't know on what circumstances changed to make them now tax-exempt status when they weren't before.
I'll get a report from the assessor and have it for Wednesday night. I'll pass it out to the council.
Okay. I guess that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Diamond.
Bruce Diamond, 74, Calbert. Following up Mrs. Walke, excuse me, sincere apologies. Item F. Is this something that can go back out to bid, back to the property, where the two people didn't seem to understand the performance bond that they were supposed to get?
Mr. Diamond, I don't, I'm going to avoid answering that question right now because that may be the very essence of some future actions that may occur, and it's going to be one of the issues we're going to discuss in closed session. So I don't want to make a statement here today that will be Exhibit A if there is some future action taken with regard to this.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nebbins.
Good evening, Esther Nebbins, 162 Bethay Street. The last time I was here, I registered my request for improvements to the sound on Channel 15 of those items that were recorded here in the chambers. Miraculously, things have gotten a little better. I'm down to in the 80s now instead of at 100, which is really a step forward, I have to say. However, these microphones that are used by the zoning board and the planning board constantly run down. And by the time you get to the end of a long meeting, and we had one five-hour meeting here the other night, at which I spoke at the end of the meeting, so I was here for all those five-plus hours, the microphones were really getting to be a problem. And I have to say, the people who take care of making sure that we're on the air from Edison TV, they work hard to try to keep those things back and forth, you know, to make sure that they're wound up and working. But we need to have a little bit better situation here, I would like to hope. The other thing is, one of the meetings that we had in the last couple of meetings, they made a change in the sound here inside the chambers, and it seems that there's some sort of a board up there that they can up the sound level in here, and they raised the sound level enough, so it made quite a difference. So between the two things, one issue being, can you hear conveniently inside the chambers? And it's getting better on TV. If we can make sure that when we hear the Free Holders Board meetings, that they also get turned up a little bit, because they're terrible at the Free Holders Board. If you're not sitting on the dais, they don't have any microphones for the people on the side that answer their questions. It's very difficult to hear them. So I did want to thank you for that. Regarding the library board, I can't tell you the number of issues that I really complained to them at the last meeting on several matters. They're sort of beginning to get a little bit of their act together, but they've got such a long way to go. It's really not doing very well. And when it came to the issue about the bookmobile, we were lucky. We have a fellow who lives in Clarabarton, who used to be the head of the Somerset County Library, who said to them, down in Washington, DC, at the end of June, they're going to have all kinds of bookmobiles that you can go and look at. I would bet you that they're not going to send anybody there. They didn't send anybody to the New Jersey Library Association. I don't think they're going to send anybody down there. It sounds like they're going to do a survey. I don't know what that's going to do. They need to do something positive about getting a bookmobile. And I don't hear yet that they are committed to doing that and a few other things, like fixing the Clarabarton Library, which for 10 years has been an issue, and for seven years, they've done nothing to continue the repairs that need to be done. They've got a long list of things, and instead, they're busy trying to figure out if they can build new walls inside the main library. God only knows why, because that's not going to produce library services for the public. They need to have some input from people, including this board. The township owns those buildings. We need to have more to say with those folks about what they're up to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Motion to close public portion.
Second. Favor. Okay, we have, moving on to the administrative agenda, Mayor Thomas Lenkey. We have the appointment of Antonia Recigliano to the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Moving on to reports from all council committees, I'll start from my right. Councilman Coyle.
Council President, the Beautification Committee is working with DOT on some projects on Route 1 to get some adoptions on different exit ramps. That's all I have for now. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir.
Mike working?
Councilman Deal.
None, sir.
Councilman Patel.
None, sir.
Councilman Joshi.
The only thing that I have to say related to the library board is that it was, it came to my attention from the bank as well as another board member that the funds were not transferred over to another bank for a higher interest rate because the director stated that it was inconvenient for her to travel so far.
How much?
The difference was 1.5% versus 2 and 1/4, or I think it was 2 and 1/2 now. It was about a 1% difference. The director, we had also, not we, because I can't vote, but the board had also voted on it, and they voted on it a couple of months ago to approve the transfer of the funds. And the director publicly stated that it was too inconvenient to go to BCB Bank.
How much money are we talking about?
Approximately $1.2 million.
Did the, Council President, sorry. Did the board express any disappointment that the director defied a vote?
They did express that they were a little concerned, and they did reiterate that they had voted for it. And one member, one trustee member, did say that he was going to follow up with the treasurer. I was a little surprised. I'm not trying to cause commotion on that board, but we did, or the board did vote for it. And I checked, BCB Bank and TD Bank happened to be about 2.3 miles away. So I don't know why they weren't transferred.
Does the director have the ability to supersede the board after?
No. She does not. The trust, just to give you an understanding of the board and the way that it works, the vision for the library comes from the trustees. The director has to implement the policies that the trustees give the director. That's the way that our system for the library board of trustees is set up. So she doesn't have the ability to not, you know, to go against, it's not like a director here, which they can do, you know, they run the department, it's the other way around. So I was a little taken aback by it, but I will follow up again just to make sure that this did occur, the transfer occurred.
It's based on what you're describing, the director does not have the authority not to follow through with that.
Correct.
Regardless of what her circumstances might be that she explained as to why she wasn't going to do it. So if you wouldn't mind, report back to us as to what
Sure.
actions need to be taken in order for something that the board voted on follows through.
Sure.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Question to Councilman Joshi, is this an operating account or this is the capital?
No, the, this is, they have a library trust fund that collects, which they've had as their, which they've been saving up over time.
Right, so they don't really need to withdraw the money or do any transaction on a day-to-day basis?
No, they don't.
Okay, so there shouldn't be convenience issue here.
Correct.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Lombardi.
No reports, just, I guess, a question for you, Council President, now that the budget seems to be on the agenda for Wednesday, will the Finance Committee start its meetings with the directors?
Yes, I'm going to coordinate with Maureen to start setting that up and getting the Finance Committee back together to, or preparing, preparing the Finance Committee on date and material.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Sandelsky.
None, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I have none.
Council President, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Councilman Deal, do we have any plan for the board liaison meeting, the board op-ed? Because I'm hearing that they will be floating some bond.
I'll have to reach out and see with them.
If they need any input from us, that's.
Yeah, they have not contacted me at all, so.
Thank you.
Council President, just, the architect for the school board made a presentation before the planning board last week, and I'm going to talk about it in my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to points of light. First, I want to start by thanking all those who participated in Earth Day and Family Day this past Saturday at the Expo Center. Especially, I want to thank the Department of Health, Municipal Alliance, Recreation Department, DPW, Police and Fire, and all the sponsors who made that event possible. Despite being a nice day, it was well-attended. So normally, when you have a nice day, people want to be outside and not indoors, but it was a great day, great event, and thank you again for all those who made it possible. July 4th is Independence Day celebration here at Lake Papiani. That's going to, do we have a time as to when that will begin? Joyce?
Music starts. Hello. Music starts at 5:45, and the fireworks start at 9:15.
Great, thank you, Joyce. Looking forward to it. And hopefully, we will not have any rain, but if we have rain on that date, rain date will be July 5th. That seems to be the common theme with the rain these days. So hopefully, it'll be nice as usual. July 8th, we are going to have the continuation of the Committee of the Hall meeting here at 6:30 in Council Chambers. On Saturday, July 13th, we're going to have residential paper shred program from 9:00 to 12:00 here at Lake Papiani. And then on Monday, July 29th, we will be having the public hearing on the budget here at 6:00 PM. July 29th, Monday. July 29th. Yep. Okay, any other points of light? Okay, moving on to the agenda items. From the Business Administrator, we have Resolutions A through H. Any questions on that? From the Department of Finance, Resolutions A through C.
Council President, actually.
Yes, sir.
On the, for the Business Administrator, C, the ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limit. budget appropriations limit.
Can you speak up? This is a call. If you.
Can we, more?
Yeah, so question to Maureen, this is on the municipal budget.
If I look at the ordinance, it talks about the percentage, the cap 2.5, ordinance also talk about the 3.5%. Is this the increase that is, I know that budget is not yet with the council, but?
This is the ordinance that I do every year to increase it to 3.5 so I can bank it for 2020. I don't, I don't use this increase for the cap this year, but I, I'm allowed to bank it.
So why not 2, 2.5%?
Because the state allows you to go to 3.5 so you have some extra money for 2020 budget. You'll push too, too close to the cap amounts.
Okay, because it talks about the, you know, 1.2 million. Is this year-over-year, also talks about 4.123 million. Is that the aggregate, that's 3.5 that we want to increase through this ordinance? Again, I'm not saying we are voting.
Oh, correct.
This is temporary.
Yes, you have the ability to, but we bank the money every year for the next budget year.
Okay. Do we know when we will have the details on the budget for this council?
You have the budget.
The, the details of the budget.
Excuse me?
The details of the budget, not just the?
Well, once, once we start, at the public hearing, you'll have them all.
Yeah, but if I look at the dates that we just spoke about, the Council President, July 29th, it's coming fast, it's almost a month. This council will need enough time to?
Just send me whatever you want me to give you.
Do we have?
You'll be, you'll, you're part of the Finance Committee, correct? So you'll, you'll, you'll have it faster than anybody, yes.
Perfect. Do we anticipate the draft budget to be at least released by the next Finance Committee meeting?
Well, we would have the, we would need copies of the budget in order for us to go through the meeting.
You have the budget.
No, no, I know, the state copy of it, that's.
Right. The backup, I have all that now.
Right, that's what I think what Councilman Patillo has referred to.
Traditionally, what we have done is, you know, again, there is an ordinance here for the water and sewer increase here. Is there a possibility to add the sanitation budget? Yes, the numbers are there, but as an extended budget for the discussion so we can go into the details, especially for this water and sewer this year? Is there a possibility?
I don't know what the question is.
Normally, the, okay, let me give the little, the idea here. Normally, may, mayor will present a budget with the PowerPoint or the slideshow, and this council will have hundreds of pages document that talks about the details of the budget. We never went to discuss department-by-department budget publicly. This year, there is a situation that we need to understand, especially water and sewer area, what the next step is going to be, 2020. So if it is possible that we can have the extended budget session specifically for water and sewer, so we understand our revenue, the capital improvement?
I can give you the sewer, we don't have a water utility as of yet.
Perfect, yeah.
The sewer I have, yes.
Can that be discussed in detail during the budget session rather than just giving the number?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, because this is something everyone should be aware, we have a situation, especially in the, for the sewer. And unless and until we talk in detail what's our revenue is, what's our expenses are, what the capital investment is required for the sewer, our staffing situation, anything that to put this back on track, again, this is based on the conversation they are going around, that will be helpful. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the Department of Finance, Resolutions A through C. From the Department of Health, Resolutions A and B. From the Department of Law, Resolutions A through F.
Actually, Council President, I have a question on F, but again, we said we'll be discussing that in the close though.
Yes.
Council President? I also have a resolution, a question on Resolution D, and I know that Mr. Northgrave went through it with Ms. Wolkey. And you may not be able to answer this tonight, but if it got to the point of summary judgment, you probably got through a lot of the discovery.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know how much legal fees that we've spent on this case?
I did know that. I don't have, I don't have, I can get it for you. But yeah, I mean, the idea is, you know, it's, I, I think we are at, I don't want, let me not, let me not guess, but yeah, I'll get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to?
I'm sorry, just, yes, to answer your question directly, though, discovery was finished, that's why we were teeing up the summary judgment motion. We reached out and said, and that's when they came back and said, no mas, so.
Yeah, Council President, just confirming on F. I know we'll be discussing this in the close session. Will this information be available for the public to understand what's, okay, so Wednesday is going to be vote on this, so we need to publish this as soon as we can.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I, once, once we've had the opportunity to discuss it in private, then, you know, as much, there's, there's one thing, Mr. Diamond kind of hit, hit right on the head, the very question that I want to address in private that I don't think I'll, I would ever discuss in public. But, you know, the balance and the information, I think most of it, you know, I've already discussed this evening, and I did, there is a short memo that was not distributed, I think it's been left on, I thought it was distributed on Friday, but it's, it was left tonight. So you have that information, certainly I can address any questions you have if, both of that.
Thank you.
Moving on from the Department of Planning and Engineering, Resolutions A through H. From the Department of Public Works, Resolutions A through C.
Council President, the question on number one, this amount is $66,530. If I look at the resolution, I'm not sure whether it's a part change order of the complete order, but it says, whereas the resolution are 388-072018, authorize contract number 18-01-05 with rapid pump and meter service 285, Street Street, Patterson, New Jersey, 07509, for emergency pump station repairs in the amount of $100,000. So is the scope is different than just changing the wall? That's $66,530. Why there is a disconnect between the, the amount that is stated in resolution versus the amount we are releasing?
Maureen, do you have that information handy?
I'm Mr. Risimano, I guess, can you explain?
I saw that same thing, and I don't know if it's an error, but I'll check it tomorrow. I think what happened was we put the blanket in for $100,000 and it was only $66,000. It was for emergency service?
Correct.
That's on the tingly lane?
Correct.
Pump station.
So will the resolution be corrected to reflect $66,530.31 or?
That, I believe that's the correct amount. I'm not sure what the $100,000 is.
All right, we'll look into it if we need to make any adjustments, we'll need to make them by Wednesday then.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, from the Chief of Police, Resolution A. From the Township Clerk, Resolutions A through C.
Council President?
Yep.
Number C. Can anyone explain what the next steps, except, you know, I hear, I see that in a public hearing scheduled by council on or before July 15th. Is this ordinance is to put this as a referendum for the public vote or we're just going to?
The, yeah, what, what the, what the law requires is that the clerk does her review of the submitted petitions. She advises council whether they are, and as you can see from here, that they are in fact in order. There was a, the petition requested a special election, there were sufficient signatures for a special, a special election to be held if that is, is the, the decision that's made. Now, the, what the council has the choice now of either accepting the ordinance as drafted by the petition, by the committee of petitioners, and, or rejecting it and allowing it to go to a vote. So that is what needs to be voted on, the council. The, the very act of accepting the petition acts as the introduction and first reading of the ordinance. The next step would be for this council to determine sometime between today and July 15th, giving enough time to publish the ordinance, to have a vote on whether you're going to accept the petition or, or ask the public to vote on it as part of a referendum.
Okay, so we are not yet there to say that we deny the Suez bid? So this is?
That's, yeah, that's not what, I mean, that's the effect of this, but that's not what, what the, what the proposed ordinance doesn't reject the Suez bid. The proposed ordinance bars the township from entering into a contract with a, with a private entity to run the water and sewer. And that's a shorthand version, I, I'm not trying to, that, that's a shorthand version of what the ordinance says, but I think that's fairly accurate.
The reason I'm asking this question is because there's a cost of the special election.
Yes.
And is there a way to avoid that and say, you know, we are not accepting the Suez bid altogether and this matter is closed?
Um, no, I mean, yeah, I'm, let me, let me, let me answer the question you asked and then let me answer the question I think you're asking. Can you do that? Yes. Would it have the effect of canceling the referendum? No. The only way to cancel the referendum is, is to accept the ordinance as written. And then that would act, then the, then the referendum becomes moot. Because the ordinance, the ordinance that the, that the petitioners have initiated has in fact been adopted by the council.
The specific language, correct, of the petition, right, where it says that it has to be kept as a public, right? So you can't, you can't just say, let's cancel it out, because then you're not doing what the, what the people, what you, what the people ask for. You got to give them what they ask for, right?
What I'm trying to say, Councilman, here is, to Council President, is if we adopt this ordinance, do we still have to go for the special election?
No, you do not. Yes, no, you do not. If you, if you adopt this ordinance, that you have done what the petitioners asked you to do, and that makes the, the need for the special election moot.
And I also want to add on to this because I've been asked the same question by residents and they wanted clarification. Even if the council were to, or the administration and the council both were to say that the Suez contract itself, itself is effectively dead, this ordinance is different because it requires, if, if passed to a vote, it allows the water and sewer utilities to be publicly owned and operated for two years. So it's not like another company can come around even if we reject Suez, correct?
No. The way I read the ordinance, it is in perpetuity unless and until there is an ordinance rescinding this ordinance. And, and I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe you can't even think about doing that for four years.
Oh, four years?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's four years you can't even think about. No, no, I, I don't, I'm, it's the statute I need in front of me. Yeah, the stat, I, the Faulkner Act addresses specifically, if there is an ordinance initiated and approved, you know, council can't turn around the next meeting and rescind that ordinance that has just been adopted. It needs to, you need to wait, and it's, I believe it's four years.
Okay, and another thing I want to clarify, so on Wednesday, there is no vote. Okay, the reason why I want this to be clarified is because numerous newspapers have stated that there is a vote to occur on Wednesday on the Suez, or on this, and it is not a vote. Okay. That will happen at a later time.
Yeah, there is, there is one issue that, that I think Council President has indicated, he wanted to go into close session to discuss both the Meadow Road, and there is one issue that I do want you to be aware of, a minor issue on the, on the petition that council just, just should be aware of, and I don't want to, I don't think it's appropriate for a public discussion on it.
Sure. Any other questions? For the member of the?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, probably, just, just, I would just read the language that's right in, that we, yeah, that we wrote, yeah, just read that.
Okay, no, all right, just, just read what the, what's on the agenda. Proposed ordinance submitted by initiative petition pursuant to NJSA 4069A, colon, 184 on June 3, 2019, to amend Chapter 27 Water and Sewer. The Township Edison Code for General Ordinance is provided for the retention by the township of the ownership, operation, management, control, and maintenance of its municipal water and sewer, deemed to have been introduced for first reading as set forth in NJSA 69A-190 on June 23rd, with the public hearing to be scheduled by council honor before July 15, 2019.
Okay, moving on to the council member of the planning board, Mr. Sandelsky.
Thank you, Council President, for the meeting of June 17, 2019. Thanks, Esther, for hanging out for the full six hours of the meeting, it was great, till 12:30 at night that you were there. There, people were dropping like flies from the audience, but you hung in there, so. The following resolutions were approved, P 7, 2019, William Grant &amp; Sons, 130 Fieldcrest Avenue. P 3, 2019, Factory Direct Enterprises, 3025 Webage Avenue. And P 4, 2019, General Electric International, 199-219 Lafayette Avenue. There was a concept presentation from the Edison Board of Education's Architect SSP for six school additions renovations that will be going out for public referendum. The total estimated cost of both the heart and soft costs for all the projects is $189 million. And if approved by the referendum, JP Stevens High School will receive a total of 130,000 square feet of additions, 69,000 square feet of footprint. Edison High will receive 97,000 square feet in additions, 63,000 square feet footprint. John Adams will receive 29,000 square feet in additions, 18,000 square feet in footprint. Lincoln Elementary School will receive 27,000 square feet in additions. John Marshall Elementary School receive 18,000 square feet in additions. And James Madison Intermediate School will receive 30,000 square feet in additions. We had a final approval, it was preliminarily approved, and Hank Bignell had to make a, had to check a couple of things on it, Royal Albert's Palace, case P 11-2018, and that received final approval. There were two presentations from Bignell Planning and Consultants that the council has copies of, the areas in need of redevelopment. The first was Mandy's Towing, R 6.605-102017 by Bignell Planning. The Edison Council asked Mr. Bignell to undertake a study to see if 18-20 Vineyard Road, Block 1100, lots 37-A, 38-A, 39-A fit the criteria as an area in need of redevelopment. The commercial site is surrounded by residential development. The site meets an area needed redevelopment Criteria D, which is for buildings and improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, et cetera. The business has grown over the years and does towing and impounding of cars and trucks for the state of New Jersey and is a 24/7 operation. They do automotive repair, towing, they have 16 trucks to tow disabled trucks and tractor trailers which were impounded on the site. Mr. Bignell represented that because the site meets Criteria D and that the operation has expanded beyond the size of the site, the board voted to approve the site as an area needed redevelopment and sent it back to council for their approval. The second was Bignell Planning Consultants on JK Estates, R 178-032019. It's known as the Air Products Site, 1696 Oak Tree Road, Block 546-1, Lot 37, to see if it's an area in need of redevelopment. The site is 7.65 acres in size. The site has had environmental issues and ongoing environmental cleanup and monitoring. The site was a former industrial acetylene and oxygen plant, and the acetylene gas created calcium hydroxide as a byproduct. A lime slurry pond was removed from the site as part of the cleanup. The planning board recommended that the health inspector, I see Jay's not here today, that the health inspector should require fencing blocking off the entrance to the site as well as prohibiting any storage, including trailers on the site, and to discourage dumping on the site. Industrial operations were terminated on the site in 2002. Mr. Bignell noted that the site meets both redevelopment Criteria D, obsolete layout criteria as well as Criteria C, a property that's been vacant for over 10-plus years. Mr. Bignell stated that there are thousands of pages of environmental studies in the site. He stated that there are monitoring wells that are still on the site and will stay on the site. on the site no matter what the ultimate use is. There are also certain deed restrictions on the site. The site also has 676 feet of frontage on Oak Tree Road. The planning board voted to approve the site as an area in need of redevelopment and to send back to the council for their approval. The new business that we had was Case P. 2019 Shopping Center Associates, the corner of Lafayette and Route 1, the former Macaroni Grill, Block 691B, Lots 6.1, 6. K, 6M, and 7E. Proposal to construct a 3,560 square feet shake shack and a true food kitchen for a total square footage of 12,285 square foot building. The old Macaroni Grill will be demolished and a new building with one common wall and two restaurants will be built. The building will share an electrical room and sprinkler room. A request for a front yard setback variance and a fourth wall sign variance were granted. The approval was granted unanimously by the board with the condition that the professionals' reports will be adhered to. The next one is Case P. 10-2019 Primrose Schools, 23 Nevsky Street, Block 590, Lot 14. This was a proposal to renovate a one-story building, a portion of which would be used as a childcare facility. 11,500 square feet of the existing 23,600 square foot vacant building will be used for the childcare facility, and the balance will remain vacant until tenant can be secured. There will be a staff of 22 people, including part-time employees. There are currently 88 parking spaces on the site. There are three existing variances on the site. The approval was granted unanimously by the board with the condition that all professionals' reports were adhered to. And the last new business was Case 9-11-2019 RG Edison Urban Renewal LLC, 20-2165, 2205 Lincoln Highway, Block 124, Lot 2E, and 20.02. A proposal to demolish existing structures on the former Mobile Chemical Site and the Route 27, and construct a new 900,000 square foot footprint warehouse building on the site. The warehouse will contain 1,119,000 square foot of warehouse, which includes the mezzanine and a 27,022 square foot office component in a single building. The site will have 464 parking spaces and have 158 loading docks, 86 on one side and 72 on the other. The building will be a speculative-built building and could potentially have two tenants if necessary, with the building being split down the middle, and having loading docks on both the east and the west side. The entire site will be fenced, and the approval was granted unanimously. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir.
Council President, we can have a question on the last one, Case P. 11, 2019 RG. This is the site which is in front of Walmart, right?
Which one is this now?
The last one.
The last one?
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's by the gas station there, but with a mobile, Mobile Chemical was.
So do we know what happened to the Route 287 exit ramp? Is that...
The only thing that, that they did mention is they are working with the state, trying to get the acceleration lane put in, but it's not a condition of the approval. They said that they can access the site adequately the way it is, but they are working with the state, and they, it appears that they're getting cooperation from the state to get this done with the acceleration lane. In other words, when you come off of 287 there, it'll bypass, they're working with, it's like it's Luke Oil there, they're, they're working with Luke Oil. Luke Oil was going to give a presentation, but it, the, it went past 11 o'clock, and they, those people left. They didn't start this till 11:30 on the night of the planning board, so, Councilor, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just, let me just, I have some additional information on that issue. The, we, I know they have been meeting with the state. I drove down to Trenton to participate and was told that, when I got there, that there were no lawyers in the room, so I was not invited in the room, but that they are continuing to talk to the state about getting that acceleration lane built. So those discussions are ongoing.
And then they made it sound like Luke Oil was going to cooperate with them to get this done. I think that was the biggest issue that was going on with that. It'll definitely help the traffic situation there. And what it'll also do is queue up cars with this new configuration that they have, where it'll be 90 degrees, where you won't be having to wait and pull out and do the jug handle, they'll eliminate all that, it'll clean it up, and it'll move cars faster through that intersection onto Vineyard Road.
Correct. And if I can recollect that, there was a property adjacent to that, which is Dunkin' Donut?
Well, that's the Luke Oil, that's the Luke Oil.
That's the one, but we are saying that's not a condition at all on this project.
That's not a condition of their approval, no, that wasn't a condition of their approval. They, they actually had a huge map where they laid it out, where they said that they're still going to continue to work on that, but that was not a condition of their approval.
This is close to a million square foot warehouse.
They actually said that they will have less people in and out of that site than at the previous Mobile Chemical Site, because I guess they had more workers at that site, at the other site. They don't know who the tenant is going to be yet at the new building.
Only, only the, the concern here, Councilman here, is 158 loading docks. That means the number of trucks will be flying around Route 27, 287 coming in this neighborhood.
The way they have this coming in is where the trucks come in, they go right into the site, so it gets them off of Route 27 immediately. And then they have an internal circulation plan. I can, I can show you the plan, I got the plan here, I brought it with me.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Unfinished business, we have ordinance 2044-2019, that is for further consideration, public hearing, and then final adoption. Moving on to communications, receive email from Robin Kenny regarding June 12, 2019 meeting. And now, moving on to discussion items, I'll start from my right, Councilman Coyle.
Council President, I just wanted to speak to the administration. We discussed a few used car lots over the week, and there's still, still a few that have not been complied with their resolution for their previous approval. One is across the street from the Mini Cooper, which I think is a beautiful site there, they probably spent a couple million dollars on their site work alone. And directly across the street is this small used car dealership next to the Italian American Club. He has close to 40 cars parked on a 50 by 80-foot lot. He has about four to five banner signs on there as well. Okay. And also, just over the weekend, I know I sent you communications on it, but there was like a pop-up Hyundai dealership that popped up some tents right at the old Edison Racquet Ball Club there. And I don't know how they permitted to do that, but again, we're trying, as part of the beautification committee through the Mayor Lanky, we're trying to clean up Route 1, and this, the dealerships, the used car dealerships are a big problem on Route 1. I still have not gotten a full report on the resolutions for each. I know we're working hard and we're getting, making progress, but I just don't know how they got approved and when they're coming in for a full planning board application, but I don't think a single one has a buffer zone, a planned parking, nor a fire turnaround set through the planning board process. So, and they continue, just keep expanding and expanding, and one minute we pull them in, and they just keep pulling back out. So I want to stay on that. I also request a call out, skipping subjects to the DOT for Edmund Street. I spoke to Carl, a meeting is set to meet with the DOT in regards to the striping of Route 1 and the deceleration lane that would guide the people to 514, correct?
A meeting is being scheduled for next week, but it is not scheduled as of this meeting tonight.
I must have misunderstood that, but we're making progress, and that's, that's good. I have nothing further, Council President, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman DiO.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to say it's good to see Red Ellis is in the house tonight, okay? Let's, yeah, one of Edison's own heroes. Red, I've been thinking about you a lot with the 75th anniversary of D-Day and all the coverage that World War II is getting in the past couple weeks, I was thinking about you.
I'm not prepared to tell you.
Well, we hope you keep, keep showing up, Red. Okay, thank you. You look good, Red. The only thing I have is that the committee, the whole meeting to continue the investigation on the racial flyer is Monday, July 8, at, in these chambers here, but the time is in question. Is there a reason why we moved it from 7:00 to 6:30? Because normally, in every, the folks here know, meetings at 6:00 or 7:00. 6:30, I don't, I'm not sure why we did that, is there a reason?
When we got off the phone, I had 6:30 written down, so when I told Cheryl, that's, that's what I had told her, and I know that we went back and forth, if that was...
Well, it's, it's good, it's good, I just don't want people confused, and we ought to make that clear right now. And that is, I don't have a problem with a 6:30 meeting, if the rest of the committee and the council doesn't have a, a problem with a 6:30 meeting, we can go with 6:30. Any objection?
It's fine, thank you.
I have no objection.
Okay, good. Then we'll go with, with 6:30. And Madam Clerk, I understand that there was a little delay in publicizing this as to, I know one resident reached out to me and said, "Hey, that committee, the whole meeting is still set for end of June," but we've cleared that up, it's on, and it is, it will be here in council chambers, Monday, July 8, at 6:30. That's what I have, Council President, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Patio.
In general, a request to DPW, Anthony Sumaro, now, this is the, the schools are closed. If we can look around the, the street crossing, yield signs, stop signs, if we can make sure that everything is in, everything is checked before school opens.
Yeah, the Division of Roads does that routinely, they work with the police department, Tim Alexander, so they'll be starting that soon.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Joshi. Yes, four things that I would like to bring up. The first, actually, for the Director of Public Works, there was an email that was sent regarding Reader Road. I was told by several residents from Reader Road and Fred Place that they had either sent an email or a service request.
Is this a, like, for a stop sign?
One was for a stop sign, well, the first set of residents said that it was for a stop sign, the other set was for, there's this pile of dirt that's behind Fred Place, and the pile is so large, I saw it myself, it's, I mean, it goes at least 10, 15 feet high.
It's not on township property, it's...
I was not sure if it was or was not on township property, but the pile of dirt is very high, and when it does rain, it...
Washes.
It, it, one, it washes, and two, there's a lot of bugs that come, so the neighbors that are right next to it have been complaining about that.
Okay, I'll check it out tomorrow.
And, and the pile of dirt is, I, at least 10 feet high.
Those are really, wow, okay.
Maybe 20 foot wide.
I'm not aware of that.
It's like a massive pile of dirt.
We would, if it's private property, we would refer to engineering.
Okay.
Because they handle the permits for soils.
Okay.
But I'll check it out.
And if it's, if it is on township property, would we be able to move it so that...
It's on township property, certainly, yeah.
Okay, just so it's not as close to those residents?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
The stop sign issue, I brought to the attention of police, and they said that they, we couldn't put a stop sign there. There's some rules that we have to follow with stop signs.
Okay.
So that just couldn't happen.
Okay. And they also asked about a line, a white line, or a reflector line at night, when they're going through, there's a lot of people that hit the curb, once you enter Reader Road, it splits.
Would this Q Alert have all these complaints on it?
They, I was told that they had posted, or that, that street got together and did it.
I'll run, I'll search Fred, Fred Place, and we'll find out.
All right. Related to the zoning and planning board meetings, I know we've brought this up before, but there, and we just mentioned it right now, too, there are times where the meeting drags so long that the residents that have come, they're not able to speak. So what I wanted to know was, I, I have a feeling I know the answer, but I wanted to know if there was any way that we can suggest to either the planning or the zoning board, whether it be through an official communication, that the residents be notified of a second date? If, if we can have a second date just for a hearing, so what I'm trying to get at is basically, I know that we're legally required to have one notice that says this is the public hearing, but if there's a scenario where it drags on for five meetings, six meetings, for example, the residents at this point feel like they are tired and burnt out, can, knowing that it has dragged on more than one, two meetings, can we have a second notice that goes out that states they have concluded their testimony and we're opening it up to public comment on another date? It's an extreme circumstance, but it has happened a few times in the last several months.
Generally, and, and I won't profess to be a municipal land use law expert, but generally, the idea is that the responsibility to notice is on the applicant. And I don't think we can change municipal land use law to require the applicant to do more than the law already requires. What we could consider is taking on that responsibility for the affected board, you know, if, if that's the desire for the affected board to say, you know, if this goes more than X number of meetings, then the board itself will send out additional notice. I think there's, there's some traps for the unwary there, but I, I said, I don't, I don't see a problem with the board making additional gratuitous notices saying, you know, that this, this matter is now, you know, we'll, we'll carry on and be heard on this date.
Okay.
Well, they normally do that at the meeting, they'll say, you know, this will carry over to X, but, you know, only to the people that are there would know that.
Yeah, I think that's, Councilman is asking if, you know, can we do an additional 200-foot notice?
I don't think legally you can force them to do it.
No, we can't force the applicant to do it, it's, it's a gratuitous action by the, by the, you know, the affected land use board. The planning board can, I mean, I, I think that, you know, probably may be better left to the board itself, but, you know, the board itself can make an adoption, okay, you know, talk to their, basically the clerk of the board and say, you know, this matter's dragged on now, let's be sure that the 200-foot people are noticed, that we are going to be hearing this again on this date, and just send an additional notice out.
So the, the township could take on that responsibility. If, I understand that the applicant is not required to pass the first time.
Yeah, we can't force the applicant to do it, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's like anything else, it's, you know, we, you know, if you're going to carry a hearing, you know, we can, we can give as broad a notice as we feel is necessary to gather the largest participation.
Okay. It, it just comes down to, and I, I think, you know, you understand what I'm getting at, it's just the residents, after a certain amount of meetings, there have been cases where it drags on months, and the 40, 50, or even 100 residents, after a certain point, feel like they haven't been heard, and they don't know when that meeting is actually going to end, so...
I mean, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know that necessarily, I don't know, additional notice is going to fix that ill, as Councilman Sandusky, you know, said, you know, the people are notified at each meeting. I think the concern that you're raising has got to do with, you know, there's a sense of, you know, the applicant may try to burn people out, just keep carrying and carrying and carrying and carrying.
And I think that's a tactic, too.
I, 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 I don't, I don't, yeah, I, I think you're, I think you're dead on, I think it's a well-recognized tactic that a lot of people use. But, yeah, I think that's, you know, I just don't know when, when, when are you going to do that notice? You know, if there's four hearings, is it after four hearings that, you know, the fifth hearing's got an additional notice? I, that, that's what I'm saying, it may, it may, the boards may be closer to the, to the scenario, and you may want to just allow the boards to, you know, set their own policy to do that.
Okay.
And make, you know, certainly make suggestions, but...
So can we, as a council, send a formal communication to them, letting them know that they probably should notify, you know, that this testimony, so I'll give you an example that has happened a few times, so, let's just say, meeting starts at 7:00. After three continuous meetings, that applicant is now done. The residents have gotten so tired, they don't want to come up anymore, but if that applicant is then done with that application, can the zoning board or the planning board send out a final notice that just says, "This applicant is now done, we will be voting on it on this date"? And, and I understand it's, it's an extreme circumstance, but it has happened several times in the last several months.
They would have to then, I guess they'd have to, and I'll defer to Councilman Sandusky on this, but what it sounds like is they probably have to defer voting.
That's precisely what I believe.
I'm not, I know there are some time limits that get imposed, but yeah, I mean, it's, I guess that's the idea, that if, if you could encourage them that if a hearing is dragged on for a number of hearings, that they, at the end of, when the applicant has put its entire case in, that they hold off voting, you know, to allow one last opportunity for residents to come in.
Okay.
I, I could, I could see a couple of, you know, reasons why they, that's going to get a lot of pushback from the development community, because it's, then they have to have their experts come back. So if somebody walks up to their microphone and says, you know, this is going to cause, you know, whatever, they, they're going to need to rebut that, and they're going to want, and you may be exacerbating the problem, because then they'll, then they'll bring their experts back who will rebut what was said, and then, then the, you know, the public could have one final opportunity, and they'll rebut it again. It just, but I mean, certainly, it's, you know, you could, you could certainly send the communication and ask them to consider it and see where they go with it.
If you could just check on the legality of deferred, okay.
I don't, I don't think there's any, I don't have a concern about the legality of it, except, let me just check on the notice issue, but I, I think you're on, you're on solid ground. I just, I just think there may be, like I said, a trap for the unwary. You may be, you may be exacerbating a problem instead of fixing it.
That's fine. And to the business administrator, I had a meeting with the mayor for about at least two, two and a half hours regarding, there's certain things that I would like to see added on the budget. Did you get that list, or were you notified?
Okay, great. And the last thing is related to Facebook Live.
To the business administrator, have you had any opportunity to look into how much it would cost, what the implementation would be? Where is the administration on this right now?
TV 15 has got us prices.
I'm sorry?
TV 15 has got us prices on it.
We got, we got prices.
Okay. And how soon would we be able to implement Facebook Live?
Right. Right after, right after the budget.
So I was told that it was, the, the most expensive one was $8,000, or approximately $8,000.
Plus services and fees. There's a whole report of that.
Okay. All right.
Because it goes on just different than what they're doing. It hooks up to the system, it goes over there, it actually will allow us to have the broadcast material.
Okay. And this, this comes out of the Edison TV budget or their section or department?
It'll probably come out of a capital account.
So we don't have any funds right, there right now to be able to do it right now?
This is your conversation with the mayor, sir.
Okay. Well, in that case, as the business administrator just stated, it comes out of the capital account. And to my knowledge, we still have funds in that capital account. Do you know approximately how much we have in that? A rough?
We have enough.
Okay, we do have enough. So my point is simple. I, I know there's one camera right now. I don't know if you're on Facebook Live. I happen to be on Facebook Live, too. There's enough money in the budget already in capital, capital, in that line item where we'd be able to get to Facebook Live. It comes down to, as I stated before, access. That's it. Do we want to have more access for our township or not? The money is already there. There's absolutely no reason, knowing that we have the funds to do it already, where we should hold back from having more access. So I understand that the administration wants to perhaps delay it, for whatever reason, until after the budget, but it doesn't make any sense.
Councilman Joshi.
Yes.
I think, to be fair, right, he just explained something that nobody knew, of what the integration of that is going to be. And none of us, I think, have had the opportunity to go through that. It's been the, yeah, let's do it, or let's better understand how and what else is involved with it. And to be honest, to be fair to this council, let them understand exactly what encompasses to get that going, to maintain it, what the ongoing fees are going to be. We haven't received any of that information.
And you're right, we haven't, but that, what, I, this is not the first time that I've been discussing this.
But, but I know, but we also haven't passed that information. We went, we asked them to do their part, so let them do their part and get the information so everybody on this council can be aware of what is it that we're committing to.
And I, I want that information, is what I, I've repeatedly been stating, I want this information so that we're able to vote on it. I was told, because I follow up with this, it's approximately $8,000. The money is there. I understand that there's an implementation time period. I've also had conversations with Edison TV.
But right, but put it all together, it's also, we're talking about microphones. We're talking about all the other capital needs. Let's make an educated decision as to what we're committing to, as opposed to, this is a good idea, let's go ahead and move forward with it, and how about everything else that we have in the plan? So it's not unreasonable to say, let's get through the budget process, understand what else is being requested, and what becomes a priority. If this is the number one priority, and everybody has the information, and they can make an educated decision, then that's fine. But I don't think, right now, what he just said, I'm pretty sure that nobody else knew about it.
I, I can say I did. I always told this information, and I, and from what I understand, it's about three weeks.
But we, but that hasn't been shared with us.
And that's the problem, though.
But, but you know it. That's my point.
But what I'm trying to say is that it is a problem that I've been following up on this issue, and the rest of the council has not gotten the information. And now I'm being told that it's going to happen perhaps after the budget process.
That, those were your words, not mine. I know you're having active dialogue with the mayor on this. If, if that's what he told you, I, I wasn't in that meeting.
Because I did tag on Facebook, everyone that has Facebook, when Westfield did it, I know Matouchen does it, there's several other townships that do it. Everyone that I've spoken to, a three-week timeline, $8,000. This is not rocket science. It's, there's, I understand that there are times where we have complex decisions that need to be made, that require a timeline, but I've been asking for this repeatedly for months now.
I understand that. But again, do we know what the volume of work?
Council President.
Just one moment, sir. Do we know all the details of what is involved with getting this? It might be something really simple. This council doesn't have that information. It would have been great if you would have shared that information. I'm not putting it just on you, but, but again, is, can we just get this information out so everybody understands what is it that we're committing to? Nobody knows much about it, other than yourself, and I guess Edison TV at this point.
And that's, like I said, again, that's part of the problem. So at what point can we get this information?
You guys have it. You have it.
Mr. Ron, you can send us that report.
The, the whole council, at what point?
I'm assuming tomorrow morning, you could send us that report, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Let's just make an educated commitment. That's all.
That's, that's great. And, and until then, whatever resident that comes, I will continue being live. You can join if you'd like. Well, hopefully, we can get this done.
Thank you, sir.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
I just want to add to Mr. Joshi's patience of waiting three weeks. I have a list of things I'm waiting for, for two years. I believe Councilman Deal and I have been waiting for a new speaker system for the outdoor events. So, I mean, I know you have to have patience, like we're having patience. 8,000 is not a lot, but we have several areas of the budget we need to have money for. I think today, what's going on now is serving adequate for now. So I think it's fair, Councilman Joshi, we're just patient in the process. I, I'm waiting for new microphones. So before you get Facebook Live, we're getting new microphones. So I'm just, point of order, just, just a matter of fact, we need, we need that. And I don't think Councilman Deal will disagree with some of the things we need when we have outdoor events. So if there's money going to happen for things, I think we just have to have a process of order. Everything is in need. But today, you're doing Facebook Live, and, and so is Anthony over there. So it's working for now, and it's not costing us a penny. I'm not saying it's what you want, but there's a lot of things that have to be done, and I, I have a list. So, and if you, if you think three weeks is a long time.
It was more than three weeks.
It could be five weeks. I'm...
I, I said that three weeks was the implementation period.
I just think it's going to happen. I, I know the importance of it. I support you on that. It's just, things take time. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lombardi.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Elliott's not here, so I can't ask him about the ordinance that him and I have been working on. But a couple of people have come up tonight and spoken about the library, and, Mr. Ron, I'm going to address this question to you, because you sit on that board. I think a couple of council meetings ago, we had addressed the issue of the bookmobile. And I believe you had indicated that you were going to express the council's desire to continue to have a bookmobile to the rest of the, you know, Board of Trustees. I guess my question is, have you expressed the council's desire to do that, and what, if any, response have you received from the Board of Trustees?
Yes. We, we talk about the bookmobile at every, every meeting. They're, they're actively looking into coming up with an option of replacement. They just don't know what yet. They have formed a subcommittee. You know, we're looking at different companies. We actually might go with something smaller. We don't, we don't know yet. But they're committed to be doing some type of bookmobile program.
I mean, as I understand it, a new bookmobile was purchased.
It was.
And there was something that was damaged, or, or, you know, it just wasn't up to the standard. And the insurance, I think, paid a good portion of the money that they got back.
Almost all of it.
Just about all of it. I guess the question is, is there a reason that we would go with an alternate option, as opposed to the one that was just bought not too long ago?
There, there is some sentiment on the board not to go back in that direction. They feel that there's other things that need to be done. So there's, there's kind of a, not a consensus on the board about it. So, so they're, they're looking into less expensive options.
Like a smaller bus or something else?
Correct. Like a smaller bus. Yep.
Thank you. And the only other question I had, and maybe, I don't know if this is addressed to Mr. Northbrave or Mr. Joshi, in terms of Facebook Live, and I know that you and I have had this discussion before, is, let's say someone joins in the Facebook Live discussion from the township, and they pose a question on the Facebook Live, what obligation, if any, would the council have to address that question, either in public, online, and would that person have to provide their name and address as they would if they came to the public here?
My instinct would be that you don't have to respond to it, and, but that you probably should and would. But would there be liability if you do not respond to an anonymous question posted during a Facebook Live presentation? Is that the question?
Something along those lines.
Okay. Then I'll be happy to get you an answer to that, Councilman.
That's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. John Sandelsky.
Just while we're on the subject of the bookmobile, and I know Sam and Maureen are both on the board there. I, I understand that we check more books out of the, people check more books out of the bookmobile than they do out of the libraries. Is that true?
Out of the Clara Board and Branch. Yes, that's true.
So I, I think it's vitally important. I think people have let their feelings be known, that they want to continue with the bookmobile. I think Esther even said that there was some trade shows, some options to go look at various bookmobiles. I, I think the library board should, and maybe you can just pass this on to them, that I think they should investigate everything possible for the town, because I don't think this is something that the people should be without. Okay, that's number one. And then I had three questions for Carl, but I'm going to give it to you, Mike. 73 Kenmore Road, cleaning out the easement. The lady came to a council meeting, and she said that she got some emails. Do you know what's going on with that?
Notices are prepared.
She said, nobody's got any notices. That's what she thought.
They're prepared, but I don't believe they were transmitted at this point. I saw the draft of the notices that were to be sent.
Right.
And the intent is to provide written notices to all, all the affected people, you know, in that easement area.
Right.
And, and in some cases, for example, if they're tenants, the owner will get the notice.
Right.
And a door knock notice will be left at the residence.
Okay. So when will that be happening? How soon will that be happening?
I do not know that, you know, it, it may have been already sent out, but I can check, and, and I can supply you with the answer on Wednesday.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that. And then I had texted Carl and Maureen on the weekend about 4:45 Plainfield Road. I know it's a county road, but there is potholes forming in the street and holding water. It appears we got a water issue.
Is this adjacent to the church?
Yes.
Yes. Brian Pecarello from DPW, or Engineering, rather, has already been out to the site, and we're looking at it. It does appear to be a water issue and not a drainage issue.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, it's just, I see people going through the potholes. Potholes are forming, so it appears we got a leak, a water leak, you know, somewhere. And then our status of park completions. I noticed there was a, a nice article in Home News about children being upset that they can't use their parks, and I understand that, but we can't control the weather. But what are, what are we looking at as far as completion of Beatrice Park and some of the other parks? Do you, do you have any idea, the timetable?
The updated schedule from Whirl Construction was, we did send that over.
Yeah, I think it's up on the website.
Yeah, I believe it's on the website, and that was supplied to us. And of course, all construction schedules are weather-dependent. You know, we did speak with Whirl, and the, the one item we did stress to them is to, any time a park is impacted by construction, that the area is fenced off, such that, you know, kids and, you know, people won't be in the construction area. But, you know, with any construction and upgrades, there, there will be inconveniences while the construction is ongoing. The finished products of the, the parks have been very nice and approved by our inspectors.
Swales is beautiful. Swales Park is beautiful. So, okay. And then for Maureen, just two things. What's the age that seniors have to be to get a freeze on their water and sewer? How old do they have to be?
I think it's 65, but I have to double check.
65. Could you check that, because quite a few seniors don't, 65, is it? There's quite a few seniors still don't know that they can get a freeze on their water and sewer. And when you tell them this, they don't know. So what's the procedure? They have to go to the health department, get a picture taken, and...
They have to get a township card, but I was speaking to Councilman Joshi about that. We're not really sure with the origin of why you have to do that, so I'm, I'm looking into that right now to try to streamline that process.
I think, I, I could explain the process if you want.
Go ahead.
So the, a senior brought this to my attention, too. Basically, they have to go to the senior center right now, get a photo ID that, that they're a senior. They get explained, and the reason for why seniors are supposed to go there is because they get a list of things that they're also eligible for, like a variety of benefits that card gives you. That senior center then mails it to you within eight to 10 days, and then they have to take that card and go to the tax assessor's office. What I had asked Maureen about was probably a week ago, was if we can streamline this process so that seniors don't have to, seniors that aren't interested in the other benefits, if they could just go to the tax assessor's office and have their name and birthdate, just, and address just verified there, because that's what, I, it's also come to my attention that, that's what other departments also do. They just, if you don't want that card, you can just show your driver's license. So I, I agree with you on that, if we could look into that.
Because some of the seniors think they have to make a certain amount of money for the water and the sewer, and they don't, only for their property taxes, right? Do they have to, have, so they were shocked. I told them they should go down there and take care of it, because it's, it's a savings, you know? The other thing is, if you could pass along to Jay, the Oak Tree Road Air Products site to follow up on the 1696 Oak Tree Road, what the planning board wanted, the area blocked off, so they couldn't store trailers that they have on there now, and, and no more dumping can be going on there, because there is monitoring on there. The left side of the driveway is the contaminated area that they're trying to clean up. That has to be capped or whatever else that has to be done. So if you could do that, I'd appreciate it. And the last thing I want to say is, I was upset when I saw on social media that representatives from SUEZ were visiting residents' houses on their own without anybody in the township knowing it. I don't think this council knew it. I didn't know it. Maureen didn't know it. The mayor didn't know it. And...